Welcome to the June Board Wrap-Up with Dr. Pennington. As we talk about the summer months of Ponca City Public Schools. Although school has been out a couple of weeks, Dr. Pennington, I know you want to talk about the meeting. One item that I did want you to address is something that occurred right before the end of the school year, which people may or may not be aware of right now. But we hired a new director of athletics for Ponca City Schools. And again, it came out late in the school year, but I know that was a very important hire for our school.
We've hired Chris Walker. And many and most of our viewers will know Chris as our former wrestling coach. We had Dwight Winburn decided to retire. And Dwight had been toying with that really for quite a while and finally made that decision. We interviewed, I can't remember, you know, things happened so fast. And you know, you finish one interview and you're on to the next one. So I can't remember exactly when we interviewed Chris. But we had what we thought were three good candidates that we interviewed. And it ended up that Chris was the individual that we selected for that position. And so he is kind of following Dwight around for the next month or so. And then on July 1st, he'll start that job.
That is the latest hire. And what was a bit of an explosive spring for our sports programs? Because you did have not only a lot of different hires, but a lot of big programs had to bring in new leadership.
Right. You know, we've had to hire a new girls' basketball coach. We've had to hire a new wrestling coach. We actually now are looking for a baseball coach. Our baseball position's open. So we've had a lot of turnover and in successful programs. I mean, if you, I mean, obviously, the wrestling program is the most consistently successful program that we have in our, in our community. But girls' basketball has been dramatically better under Dwight in state tournament appearance, either his first or second year here. And even though he had a young ball club this year, you know, I thought at the end of the year, they were playing pretty well. And we've got some really good young talent coming up. I mean, we've got probably the best collection of young players in the ninth grade that we've had since that state tournament team. So we expect good things out of the girls and our baseball program. The last two years have been the most successful years since I've been here from a, from not only an overall win standpoint, but just the quality of play has been better. And so, so those are big hires. And obviously, you know, in our situation, especially with budget, this has really not been a good time to have job openings. You know, it was better, we liked the people we had in those positions and wish they would have stayed. But you know, in Dwight's case, he's ready to retire. In Chris's case, he just had given really all he could to the wrestling program for a number of years and felt like it was time for him to go and do something different for a while. Then the athletic director job opened up, which gives him the opportunity to stay involved in athletics, but you know, not be actively coaching practice every day. And then with baseball, I think that Coach Freeman, you know, has a young family and decided that, because baseball's a grind. I mean, it is, it's four nights a week in the spring and at least two of those nights you're out of town. And it's a lot of late bus trips. And I think with his family situation, he's decided it's time for him to step away for a while. And so that's where we are. And we also, we're actually have our soccer, girls' soccer jobs open. We're in the process of interviewing for that. And so we've just had a lot of stuff going on and we'll get those positions filled and we'll be ready by the time school starts for another Ponca City Wildcats athletic season.
We don't talk a lot of sports or athletics on this particular program, at least while the camp is rolling.
Right.
But I thought it was interesting, I read an article by Keith Ballard, who's the very successful Tulsa superintendent of their schools. And he talked about the involvement a superintendent has with the hiring of coaches. And obviously, the Tulsa School District is a large one. And he talked about how difficult it is to be in and all those hires. But he also talked about how he relates back to schools like Claremore, Owasso, Ponca City, Bartlesville, where superintendents can be a little more one-on-one when they make those type of hires. I thought it was interesting. Can you explain how that process works? Are you involved when we hire a new head coach? Do you get involved in that hiring process?
Well, I get involved in some programs more than others. The typically what we do, our process is, is that the athletic director will put together a committee that will do a first round of interviews. They'll, he will, he, she will look at applications. And it depends upon, you know, sport and exactly how many applications we have. In some situations, the committee will actually meet and they'll look at the applications and decide who they're going to interview. In some cases, the athletic director will go through those applications first and then they'll take a list of candidates to the committee for them to interview. But, and that committee typically will consist of the athletic director, sometimes the district personnel director, and then a faculty member, and then one or two parents, kind of to represent that particular parent group or to represent the community. And then they will, they will screen those candidates and then they'll, they'll submit a list. They may submit five, they may submit three. But typically, when you interview, there's always a point where, you know, you can say, this is my top tier of candidates that we want to forward on to the, to the central office or to the superintendent to be, to participate in. And then we have another committee at this level. And I'll be a part of that. Then the, and then typically a building level administrator, because these people have to teach for us. You know, we don't, unless they're a lay coach, which is somebody who coaches for us, but does not work for the school, their full-time employment is not with the school district. They're going to, they're going to, so they have to teach. And we expect our coaches to teach a full load of classes. We expect them to be good in the classroom. I don't think you can really be a good coach and not be good in the classroom. Because teaching and coaching is all, it's really the same thing. It's about having relationship with students. It's about having a relationship with the parents. And it's about providing instruction. Whether you're providing instruction in a history class, you're providing instruction of the technique of the sport, you have to be a teacher. And so, so then we'll, we'll interview and typically we'll have a board member involved in that. At the end of the day, once that process is finished, if I'm involved in that process, then the final decision's mine. And while I'll listen to the committee and I'll listen to the input that they give, I'm going to do, make the decision that I think is, is best for the school system and individuals best able to handle that, handle that job. So far, in that nine years I've been here, it's kind of interesting how the process works. Generally, everybody's top candidate is the same. Somebody usually comes to the top in that interview process. Now, sometimes what happens is the person that we, that we, that is our top choice that we offer does not take the job. The best example of that can be, would be that, oh, I can't remember now how long it's going to spend, but, but before we hired Dwight, we'd actually tried to hire him before that to be the girls' basketball coach. We interviewed, we offered him the position. And then he actually accepted. And then the next morning called and said, I just really can't do that. I'm not ready to leave New Kerr. And so we went with our second choice. And then when the job became open again, we interviewed again and Dwight applied again. And we hired him. And so, you know, so sometimes your first choice doesn't, doesn't always accept the position. And that's something that people who are not in the process, and sometimes the people on the committee itself, we don't go back to the, to the committee and say, you know, we've offered the job to this person and they've turned us down. We don't share that kind of stuff. It's not really important. And because what reality is, is that we've got to come around whoever we hire. And that person has to be who we support. The applicant pool, it's kind of surprising. You know, there are some years where we'll have a position open and we don't think our applicant pool's very good. And that same position may open three or four years later, and there's lots of good applicants for the job. The, the reality is, is there's no secrets in the coaching profession. There is, you know, people talk about networking and how you network on Facebook, on the internet. Coaches have always had a network. And they, and they know, they know things. They know what kind of players you have had and what kind of players you have coming. They, they know whether you've got a good freshman class or a good sophomore class. They know that. Sometimes in some sports, they'll know how good your elementary kids are. So those, so those, they know those things. They know what kind of administration you've got. They know whether or not they're going to be supported, whether or not they're going to have the tools that the district's going to provide, the tools they need to be successful. Now, again, those tools are different at different locations. But they also know whether you're, they know whether you're committed or not. And they know what kind of parents you've got. They know whether your, whether your parents are easy to work with or they are hard to work with and what the expectations are. You know, we've had times in the past where I've had people who have been critical of our coaches, which is, I mean, that's just the world we live in. Everybody expects that, that all it takes to win is to get the right coach. If we have the right coach, no matter how good our talent is, we're going to, we're going to do all these wonderful things. And I've, and I've had that conversation with, with folks before about, you know, yeah, it's easy to fire people. You know, I mean, we could replace every coach every year. But eventually, nobody wants to come to your community because they know that coaches aren't going to last very long. So all you end up with are people who can't get jobs other places. So we're, you know, we, we try to give our coaches a reasonable amount of time to establish their program and to, and to have a chance to be successful with their players and with their system. You know, I can't sit here and say whether that's three years or five years. But we try. Now, there are obviously things that can happen that would cause you to make a decision quicker than that. But, but we're going to give people time. Because you know, we've asked that person to pick up where they are and move to our community. And we ask them to invest time and effort in this community. We have to give them time for that to pay off. And, and, you know, we're not blessed here with an overabundance of great athletes. You know, we have, we, I mean, Phil, you've been following Ponca City Athletics probably longer than anybody else in this community. And you know that we have peaks and valleys, that we have some years where we have a, we have a good group of kids that are together at the high school. And my experience was that was been it. When we have a good group of kids, we're competitive. But sometimes we don't have good groups of kids. And, and that's typical for smaller communities. And while we're not a small community in Oklahoma, in the big, if you look across the country and at the size of high schools and communities, you know, we're kind of a small community. And, and we don't get a lot of movement into our community. We don't, I don't know, can you think of when the last time was that outside of when Todd Stiley was here coaching wrestling, that, that we had somebody move in that either helped, made a dramatic difference for the basketball program or the, or the football program or the wrestling program or baseball?
If you go back six years, Jared Rocha would probably be the, and then his brother. But yeah, we, we win and lose with our kids.
Yeah.
That's pretty much what you see on the junior high field is what you're going to see in four years on the high school field.
Those are our kids. And so, which means that, that we have to really, to be very successful, we've got to build a system that, you know, really should reach down into the elementary level and work its way up. And when you have coaching changes, then you can't have that system in place. And that, and that makes it difficult. And so when you've had four football coaches over a 12-year time period, that didn't sound like very many. But when you think about your elementary program and your middle school program and building towards success, that's a lot of change. And if you look at school systems that have lots of success consistently in their programs, those programs have a lot of stability. You look at baseball in Owasso, Larry Turner's been the baseball coach at Owasso, I think, for 35 years. Now, one reason he's been there that long is because they've been winning. And so when you win, it's easy to stay. And, 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 and so there's kind of a chicken and the egg thing, you know, you, what comes first and how do you make it happen? But, but you have to have stability. And if you look at, at the history of our programs and you look at how many coaches we've had in football, how many we've had in basketball, you know, we don't, we don't, we, I would not call us a stable area. Now, you know, why is that? Well, one of it is because we don't win. And so people get frustrated and the coaches get frustrated and they leave and we bring somebody else in. And so, you know, we need stability, which means, you know, we've got to hire the right people and give them the right tools and, and hope that the community will give them time. And that seems to be the thing that, you know, if I had to say there's been a change in the last 15 years, is we've developed a mentality that you got to win right away or you're gone. And that's not just here in Ponca City, it's all across the state and all across the country. And my take on that is it just makes the stronger, stronger because they've got stability and, and it doesn't give everybody else. And that's been the issue, you know, you talk about Tulsa, I mean, that's been the issue in Tulsa. Their coaches don't stay very long. And, and so, you know, they have lots of turnover and, and they end up with people who are coaching that, you know, but they're just doing it to make a little extra money and they're not really in it because, for the right reasons. Some of that is, we all suffer from that from some extent, you know, we, we, we're not able to, when we have a new head coach, all the assistants don't lose their jobs and go someplace else. If you think about a state like Texas, when you're, when you have a head football coach come in, all those other previous football coaches are gone. They're out looking for a job someplace else. We can't do that here. One reason is I'm not sure it's the right thing to do. But the other thing is, is because of the way our, tenure's not the right word, but, but the way our continuing contract law works is once you've been in a district three years as a, as a, as a teacher and a coach, then whether you coach or not, you still have a right to that teaching job. And unless you've been a performer in the classroom, then, then you've still got a job. And so what you'll find in Oklahoma schools is that you, you'll have individuals that will come in as a, as a coach, maybe they're coaching multiple sports. They'll be there three years and maybe five years or 10 years, but then they decide they don't want to coach anymore. Well, they still have a teaching position, but now we don't have, when that, we're trying to look for a coach without a teaching position to go along with that coaching job. Or, or, or maybe they don't decide, maybe they've been a football, basketball, track coach, they decide they don't want to track, coach track anymore. Well, again, we don't have the ability to say, if you're, you've been here 10 years, you're not track, coaching track anymore. You, you, you can't do that. You know, somebody can't come to me and say, I don't want to teach history anymore. If you decide you don't want to teach history anymore, you don't have a job anymore. And so, so those kinds of things kind of restrict us. But you'll find a lot of that in school systems like Tulsa, especially if you look at Tulsa when the decline really hit, because, you know, we used to play Tulsa schools here. And some of the best athletic programs in the state were the Tulsa Public Schools. But when the decline really hit them was in the, was in the, was in the mid 80s, when they had a large number of coaches that got out of coaching, but kept their teaching position. They weren't able to hire really quality coaches to come in and take those, take those spots.
Interesting. Congratulations to Chris and he'll do a great job. Now, the, the last thing I guess is the board meeting. Highlight, if you, if you will, some of the things the June board meeting entailed.
Well, you know, June board meeting is, is really, you know, we're kind of, we're at the end of one year getting ready to start the next. And so you had a lot of stuff on the meeting agenda last night, which was the renewal of contracts for business that we do every year. In Oklahoma, you can only have a contract that only can be for one year. And so there's a lot of stuff that we do every year, who we hire as an auditor, who we hire as our district, the board attorney, who takes care of, of our software management system, the accounting software, all those things. That those things all come up for renewal every year because that's just the way we have to do business. And so we had a lot of that last night. We appointed some positions. We, we appoint a treasurer, we appoint a minutes clerk, we appoint an accompaniment clerk, even though those are paid positions, people we have hired by technical, we still have to appoint those individuals. We did that last night. And then we approved a budget for next year. We actually had a budget hearing before the board meeting where we talked about where we had been, kind of the historical trends for funding and how we've been spending our money. Then we talked about budget. The thing that, that, kind of the highlights of the budget meeting is that we have cut about $800,000 in expenses for next school year. And we've done that through, we've, we've changed, ended some contracts and some things, some, some programs we had been contracting out. We've taken those back over ourselves. But the main thing, mainly what we've done is we're not hiring back every teaching position that we've had a resignation in, either because somebody's going to another job or because they're retiring. And so, and then through that, we've eliminated some programs. Part of the one that, that, you know, is, the one program we've eliminated is we've eliminated driver's ed from the course offerings that we offer at the high school. And that is three teaching positions. Now, the individuals that hold those positions are folks that have been in the district for a long time. And so they can, they have, they can teach other things. And so we've reassigned them to other teaching positions. We, we, we're not replacing our wood shop teacher, shop teacher. Pat Young, who retired. His wife also retired. And we're not replacing the career tech program that she taught. We, we're not replacing a math teacher. We're not replacing an English teacher at high school. We're not replacing a special ed teacher at West. There's lots of those positions like that. And there's a difference between not replacing and eliminating. You know, we've eliminated driver's ed. Our intention is not to ever offer driver's ed during the school year again. We were one of the few districts left that were doing that. Most of us had eliminated that in the 90s. Ponca City had eliminated it, but brought it back in 2002, I think it was, maybe 2003. But we've eliminated that position again. We have no intention of bringing it back. These other jobs, we're not replacing them right now because of money. It's not because we don't want to. We just don't, our budget is 20% less than what it was in 2009. And the state legislature had an opportunity this session to, to restore us, and they chose not to do that. They have allocated some additional funding for, for common education. But the part that matters to us, which is the money that goes to the school funding formula, we're only going to get about 20 million new dollars into the funding formula. And, and when you're, you know, 200 million dollars short of what you were in 2009, 20 million is not very much money. And, and they actually decided to put more money into programs in the Department of Education than they did to send it to school districts. And so that's disappointing. And we have to do a better job of making the public aware of what our needs are. We have to do a better job as supporters, those people who support public education have got to do a better job of letting the people that we elect know that we need our money back. And again, it's one thing when your budget is cut because of an economic crisis. We understand that. We know in 2009, when the recession hit, the great recession, as they call it, that things were very difficult. And we understand that the legislature had to make budget reductions. Okay? But our state appropriation, the amount of money we're going to spend in Oklahoma next year is almost back to where it was in 2009. So again, you know, the question I think we have to ask is if we've, if our appropriation is back to where it was in 2009, why is education funding not back to where it was in 2009? Why are we still almost 200 million dollars less than what we were in, than we were in 2009? We have more students in this state and yet we have less money to spend on our schools. And I, and again, I've not had anybody involved in the budget process that can tell me where, 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 where did the money that we had in 2009, who's got it now? Because the money's gone someplace. So it's either gone to other state agencies. And if that's the case, then why? You know, what, what spending in this state is more important than what we spend on the education of our children? And I, you know, I think we have to hold the legislature accountable for that. I mean, again, it's one thing when there's not, when they don't, when, you know, because of financial crisis, financial conditions, they don't have the money to spend. But we have, we ought to at least be back to where we were in 2009 so that we can start talking about increasing funding to schools. I mean, that's the thing about it, is that we're 49, we've, we've fallen, we're, we are 49th or 50th in what we spend on education of our children. We are last in the region. Everybody around us, Arkansas, Kansas, Mexico, Texas, Colorado, they all spend more money on their students than we do. And, but yet we expect to get the same quality of education. And, and you know, I understand that we're not going to spend as much money as they spend on Connecticut, Connecticut, New York, those kinds of, we shouldn't. But we, I don't think we should be last in what we spend. And the gap's pretty big. I mean, it's not like it's $25 difference. You know, it's, it's $1,000 different between what we spend and what the regional average is. And, you know, we ought to be better than that, I would think. I would think we could. It's just a matter of where your priorities are as a state and, and, you know, polling data is, is accurate. The one consistency over time is, is the people of this state support a quality public school system. They continue to say in poll after poll, they want more funding for their schools. They'd rather have money spent on schools and receive tax breaks. And I don't know why the legislature doesn't get that message. Again, we have to do a better job of making our case and involving the public. And we generally don't do that. I mean, we, we try to handle all that because it seems like all we do is ask about money that we always need. And I've had members of the legislature, I mean, when are you ever going to have enough money? I don't know. I'd like, I'd like to be there someday. I'd like to be able to tell our state people, yeah, we have all the money we need. We're able to meet the needs of the kids that we have. We're able to provide quality teachers in every classroom. We're able to provide a quality education to every student. And we do a good job. If you look at our, how we match up nationally on almost every measure of student performance, you know, we're at, we're either right in the middle or a little bit above average. So, you know, we do more with less already anyway. And again, I, I've given up any hope in my career of being the national average in anything that we do from an economic standpoint. But I would like to be more competitive on a regional basis because it hurts us. It hurts us in retention of staff. Every teacher we have can go to a neighboring state and make more money. They can have better equipment. They can have more supplies to teach with. And, and I don't know when it's going to happen, you know, but, but there is a looming teacher shortage coming. We had a significant number of retirements this year. We're going to have more retirements every year for the next five years. We're getting ready to turn over. And that's not us, but that's everybody in Oklahoma and across the country. And so we know that there, I mean, I remember how many kids I was with in the College of Education back in 19, in the 1970s. And enrollment in the College of Education is, at Oklahoma State, is about a third of what it was then. So there's no way that we have enough people coming through the pipeline to fill all the jobs that we have. And, and the people that surround us know that they pay better. And they can come and recruit and take, and recruit our kids and offer them a better job with, or a job with more money. And, and I would think that as a parent, I sent my child to go to college to get an education and then to get the best job they could. And one of the things that, that you use to value whether a job's a good job or not is where it is. And that's, all of us have different goals. Some of us wanna live in rural parts of the country, some wanna live in suburban areas, some wanna live in, live in urban areas. But so, so where do I wanna live? And then how much money am I gonna make? You know, that's what, that's, that's why I know people make job decisions.
I had one more thing I wanted to ask you about. It's, it has to do with graduating seniors. It's the end of the year instruction, the tests that those kids have to pass. And I know I've seen some numbers from bigger cities, but did Ponca City have an issue with that or did most of our graduating class of 300, did most of them get through this okay?
Well, we have kids, we have students who have yet to pass all the EOI's necessary to receive a high school diploma. It is a, you know, I can't give you a, a number of percentage because it changes all the time, but we have that. I mean, the, we haven't heard us make a big deal out of it like other places have, but just because of the, our students that fall into that category are students who have not done everything that we've asked them to do. They haven't attempted a project yet, or they haven't come in and taken benefit of the remedial sessions that we offer. But we do have some students who have not gotten their high school diploma because they haven't passed all four EOI's. Now, we've got a summer session going on and, and what we found out last year is that those, if the kids will stay with us and do the things we ask them to do, they'll, they'll eventually get through. You know, it, we, we, we make, it, it is an incredible amount of tracking that has to take place for us. It's a lot of man-hours for us to make this happen. And at the end of the day, you know, I, I don't, I, I, you know, I, I don't know why we do this. I mean, we do it because the state requires us to do it, but, but I don't know at the end of the day that that's a, more of a guarantee of student learning than the system we had in place before. You know, for, God, since the inception of, of public schools in the United States, you went to school, you completed your coursework, you got a grade in a class, and if, if, if you earned a grade of a C or a D or anything above an F in a class, that was enough. And, and I know there are those that, that argue that, that students get grades in class, but they really aren't reflective, they don't enroll the material well enough. And I, but I think you can say that about any class, you know? You can say that about college classes, you can say that about anything. And, and so, we've, we're just test crazy right now. And I'm not sure at the end of the day that it's, that it does what those people who want it believe it's gonna do. There's some, there's, there's, there's a lot of, of, of churn right now in education circles about assessment. You know, the purpose of assessment is supposed to be to, to evaluate where a student is and then be able to make corrections to their, to their learning. Identify weaknesses, correct those weaknesses. The, and, and, but we've gotten to this mode now. We wanna use tests to evaluate schools, we wanna use tests to evaluate teachers, we wanna use tests to deny students high school diplomas. We're starting to see across the country, parents starting to push back. They're tired of all the testing because it, there's no doubt, as much as we'd like to say we don't teach to the test, we do teach to the test. And it defines our curriculum and it narrows our curriculum and it narrows the school experience that children have. And I don't think that's good. And if you, if you, you know, what's interesting is all this testing is more reflective of what you see in, in, in the Asian, Japan, China, Korea, those kind of countries, where they assess all the time and those assessments make life decisions for kids. That's never been a part of our system. Our system has always been we're gonna provide a general education, we're gonna provide you exposure to a lot of different courses. We, we're gonna have electives in the curriculum. And at the end of the day, you know, we're gonna have this door for you to go to college or go get training, whatever it is. But, but it's always been, our system has always allowed people the freedom to pursue their dreams, where those dreams are. And we've never said, well, you can't do that because of a test score. Now, we, obviously you can't go to med school without a certain medical school score, you can't go to law school. And while we have interest exams for colleges, there's always been an alternate path and there's always been a way past that. And what's interesting is as we start to test more and more, we start to narrow the curriculum more and more, and we're gonna produce great test takers, Japanese and Chinese people from Hong Kong, Shanghai, they're over here looking at our system because of the openness of it. Because, you know, there'll be a headline in the newspaper or in a magazine sometime in the next 12 months, because there is every year, that talks about how our kids do on their national test. And they're gonna say that students in the United States are at the middle or the lower part of it, it's some kind of international exam. And, and we do that all the time and we beat ourselves up and we talk about how horrible it is. But you know, you can go back to the 1950s and you can find the same thing. Time Magazine article, you know, we, we're behind the Russians. And, and, and you go back and you look at that 1950 Time Magazine article, the predictions it made for the United States, and all the bad things that were gonna happen for us, to us, the same thing we're saying, we say now. And then look what happened over the next 40 years with the United States and with Russia and the rest of the world. And we led the world in patents, we led the world in entrepreneurship. And we've always done that. And I think that's something our, that our education system has previously structured allowed that to happen. I don't know, you know, nobody can predict what's gonna happen over the next 40 years, but I don't think in the long term that the narrowing of our curriculum is really gonna help us. And, and denying these kids' high school diplomas is just one example of that. With, especially those kids who've created, who've, who've made every other requirement, you know? And plus, we're spending a lot of money on it. That's the other part of it, you know? It'd be different if we were flush with money and, and, and we were paying our teachers at the regional average and, and we had all the staff we needed to help kids with the issues they bring to school. We had all the therapists and all the people we needed because we have kids coming to us with a lot of issues. If we could, if we had all those people we needed and we were gonna test too, well, we might do that. But, but, but instead of spending money where it ought to be spent, we're spending money on assessment. And, and I just don't think that's a good use of state dollars, it's not a wise use of state dollars. And again, you know, I could be wrong, this could be the, absolutely the best thing to do. And, you know, 25 years now, somebody will say the, the best thing we did in the state of Oklahoma was test kids as much as we did. I don't think anybody's gonna say that. I think at the end of the day, we're going to, we may not regret it, but hopefully we'll change it, back off it a little bit and, and have a little bit more common sense. Because we can still assess kids and get useful information without spending all the money we're spending right now, without taking all the time. And that's the other thing. It takes a lot of time to do this. I mean, we basically shut down school for a month because of assessments. And when we finish it, the kids are done. You know, I mean, they, they know that they've done all the assessments, they, they're done. I mean, as far as they're concerned, they've done what they're supposed to do this year. And, and so, we need, it'd be nice if we could somehow, not only as a state, but as a nation, sit down and have a rational conversation about where really, really what we wanna do and how much money we ought to be spending and, and see if we can kinda accomplish the same goals in a better way.
People may see in the newspaper, there was a little ad where it said, "Thank you to all these volunteers during testing." And it had about 50 parents' names listed, and that's what Dr. Pennington's talking about. There's not enough manpower, so you have to rely on volunteers to, to come in and to help during that time.
Yeah, and, 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 you know, we have, we actually, the, the state has rules about, because we can't supervise, we gotta have individuals who are not affiliated with the school in those, and, and the list of 50, you saw it in close. Because we had, I don't remember which site that was, but we had that all across the district. Yeah, it's just a, it's a lot of time and a lot of effort. And at, and at the end of the day, the reality is this, in this district, because of some assessments that we use ourselves, those tests, especially grades K through 8, don't tell us anything that we don't already know from an academic standpoint. There's not any information they get that we can't already provide parents about how well their children are doing in school and where they are academically and what their academic strengths are and their academic weaknesses are. And that assessment that we give is the measure of academic progress, and we do it for about a third of the cost of what the state does it for. So I mean, there's, there's another way out there. We seem to be smarter about what we do.
Thanks for your time, have a great summer. We'll talk to you next month. For Chris Adams behind the camera, Dr. Pennington, I'm Phil Turney. Have a great summer.